Few tries, we were having a service unavailable, but now it's available.
Can I play some elevator music while we're waiting?
Sorry for the delay this evening. Few tries, we were having a service unavailable. There it goes. Okay, we're live on YouTube and so I will. I'll open the webinar for for the public.
That looks like it, Hannah.
Yeah, it looks like it's it's stopped for the attendees at this point. If you if you want to begin, I think we're good.
Good evening, everybody. Like to call to order the board meeting for Thursday, May 20th, 2021. If we could rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Anna. Mr. Regal, could you call the roll, please?
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Minji?
Here.
Mr. Sinta?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Weidemann?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here. Thank you, Bob. I'll accept the motion to approve the official minutes from the May 6, 2021 regular public board meeting.
Sinta moves.
Grab a second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our student recognition. This evening, we're recognizing our school board reps. Dr. Rishi?
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. You know, it's that time of the year where I want to remind everyone of the dedication and the time that these young people have given to us. They've provided a window into the experiences they and their peers encounter as students of Haverford High School and students of of Haverford Middle School. Each week, each of our meetings throughout the month, they continue to share with you what's happening in the in the school from from that perspective of of a student. And we all know that there are many, many other things that they could be doing on Thursday evenings other than spending the spending this time with us. And middle school students, you can look forward to attending the entire meeting as the high school students do. Each each meeting that they are with us. And we all know that throughout this past year, we've had some pretty lengthy meetings. So I I think Erica Borby and Katie Bon Giovanni have put in more than their time. When when you consider all that we have been meeting about this year and the time that they have spent with us. So we will recognize them this evening and do our virtual handoff of of the plaque. Erica, on behalf of the board, I will present you with a plaque of recognition of your service to the board. Your ongoing service on also Erica and Katie served on our strategic planning committee last year as our student representatives. They're going to be missed in in so so many ways. So I want to put you on the spot, but Erica, if you if there's anything that you'd like to say?
Thank you so much. It's been an honor spending my Thursday nights with you. I yeah, yeah.
Great. All right. And we'll do our virtual handoff of our plaque, our presenting our plaque to Kate Bon Giovanni. And again, Kate, thank you as well for the time that you've spent with us. Anything that you'd like to say?
I just really appreciate the opportunities that I've had. The Strategic Planning Committee was such a cool experience. And I really have enjoyed spending every Thursday here. It's been really fun. I've learned a lot. Yeah, it's been really great. Thank you.
Great. And I should note that both of of these young ladies are in attendance at the board meeting, even if they are not the board representative that night. So I have noticed in the in the participant list. And they're real troopers hanging hanging in there for the entire duration of of the meetings. We have three high, three middle school students who I think you will all agree have done a phenomenal job this year, sharing with us again, a window into what it's like to be a student in in our middle school. And so we'll do the virtual pass off. We have certificates for our for our middle school students. And our first first student this evening to that I want to recognize Ian Slavik. Ian, we have enjoyed your videos. You've done an outstanding job sharing sharing with us. And we hope to see you again as as a board representative.
Thank you.
Wonderful. We're glad to have you here. And on those evenings when Ian was not with us, we also heard from Zoe Starr. And Zoe, you entertained us and gave us, you created such a picture for us, the way that you described the events that were taking place at Haverford Middle School. So accept the certificate on behalf of the school board and thank you, and we hope to see you in the in the future as well.
Thank you.
And our third student this evening, Farah Samuel from the from the middle school. We have appreciated her involvement with with the students. And we thank her for all of the work that she that she has done. Right? So Farah, on behalf of the board, I present you with a certificate as well. Great. Thank you, Mr. Feinberg.
Thank you, Dr. Rishi. And thank you very much to all our student reps. We really appreciate the time and energy that you've shared with us. And we look forward to hearing good things about anyone who might be graduating. And we look forward to seeing other folks back with us next year. Next item on our agenda is our student reports. And first, we have Zoe Starr from the middle school. Zoe?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Zoe Starr from the middle school, as you may know now. And I will be reporting for the middle school tonight. We have been working very hard over the past two weeks on the PSSAs. We are taking the assessments online this year, and things have gone really well. Exactly 712 to 15 year old students have been vaccinated at the vaccine clinic run by the DCIU and Springfield Pharmacy on Monday. Many more are getting vaccinated at their pediatrician. We are enjoying the opportunity for optional mask wearing when outside. Everyone has been following the rules and enjoying a little more freedom. Our Bringing Hope Home fundraiser raised over $53,000. We are so happy to help to provide financial support to families in our community battling cancer. We are excited about the annual Bringing Hope Home Olympic Field Day on May 26, 27, and 28. We are looking forward to getting the weekend started early with an early dismissal tomorrow, Friday at 11:20 a.m., in case you forgot what day of the week it is. Um, I hope you all have a wonderful weekend. Thank you for allowing me to present. Have a good night.
Thanks, Zoe. Next up, our high school student, Erica Borby.
Good evening, community members of the board. I am so honored, but a little bit sad to present my final ever report to the board. First and foremost, students were thrilled with the announcement of an in-person graduation ceremony in Kornog Stadium. After class speaker auditions on Monday, May 17, a class speaker was selected for the class of 2021 and all students involved, including roll callers and class officers, who have their first practice session tomorrow at 11:00. On Wednesday, May 12, the Haverford Girls Track and Field Team celebrated their second place win at Central League Championships and are gearing up for a huge performance at District Championships tomorrow. On Thursday, May 13, the Haverford Unified Track and Field Team culminated their season with second place medals at their regional meet. Student athletes will have their signing day next Wednesday, May 26, and senior scholarship recipients will be awarded on June 2 at 6:30 p.m. These past two weeks, Haverford Athletics celebrated two major retirements. Coach Gal announced his retirement from coaching Haverford football after 29 years. And Coach Bogga was also celebrated for coaching over 30 years of Haverford baseball. Congratulations to these coaches and their years of commitment to Haverford Athletics. On Tuesday, students were off for Election Day. Juniors and seniors battled it out on the turf for Powderpuff, but seniors unfortunately took a devastating loss. The juniors may have won the battle, but not the war. After Powderpuff, numerous students also hit the polls. Whether they were voting or volunteering, students made sure to exercise civic engagement. This week, keystones and AP tests were administered administered to students. Students that did not take keystones enjoyed a later start to their day, and AP test seekers were able to take their test in school, whether it was at 8 a.m. or 12 p.m. When Katie and I received our plaques this morning from Mr. Dunning, we asked if this was our final meeting. Katie responded with a yes. Have you finally had enough? To which Katie replied, I don't think I can ever get enough. That is a perfect summary of my time with the board, and I'm sure Katie would agree. My time here definitely shaped my high school experience, and I wouldn't trade it for the world. It's been a pleasure spending my Thursday nights with the board, whether it was at Oakmont or over Zoom. And I look forward to passing on Katie and I's legacy to the next generation of school board representatives. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Erica. Next item on our agenda is public session. Anna, how many speakers have signed up?
We just have one one public comment this evening. And if I'm from Ms. Helene Conroy Smith, so I'm going to add her into the room.
Ms. Smith, if you could just remember to recite your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Helene Conroy Smith. I live at 32 East Westwood Park Drive, Haver Town. I'm sorry. Good evening. There has been much discussion about transparency. Transparency means capable of being seen through clear implies an abundance of cloudy, an absence of cloudiness and muddiness. I think it's appropriate to have some of our questions answered in the next school board meeting. When will our school board board meetings be open to the public? What is that date? What is your metric? Our children are in school, and there are large rooms that can be used for parents to gather safely at the meetings. Additionally, on the 12, 3, 2020 and 4, 21 meetings, I ask for all curricula to be placed online for stakeholders to view. When will that occur? Under federal guidelines, parents have access to the curriculum, yet it's not posted online, nor can we come into the building under COVID guidelines to view the curriculum. The district will be wise, in my opinion, to have all curriculum posted so no accidental issues or viewing of inappropriate material is shown. Parents will be able to have conversations with their children about what is occurring in their classes, and more information can be caught immediately instead of after the fact. We are now on May 20, and I've received no answer. Neither has many community members. In January, Ms. Ramos decided to teach her class a lesson. In the seventh grade history class, children were shown Adam Ruins Everything. This, some of the lines include, well, maybe this neighborhood is too insufferably white. It doesn't mean we're all racists. It's not accident that suburbs are white due to decades of racist policies. This is not acceptable to say to any child, let alone to teach it in school. I moved here 23 years ago from South Philly for a yard, a parking space, and our schools. Every person has a different reason to be here. My children have friends from Korea, Turkey, Ghana, Japan, Germany, Ecuador, and other countries. You're allowing a false narrative to be taught, and I would like to have the teacher explain the lesson and show us exactly its intent for the use in front of the board and in front of all the parents. Most know Adam Ruins Everything is adult comedy that uses, it's used to explain political satire, not a social science lesson. Another transparency concern is I emailed Mr. Feinberg on April 23, then again on April 29 to ask Mr. Feinberg how PSBA has been influencing many of our new and controversial policies, such as the anti-racist resolution, and how is a contractor of PSBA and his position as non-conflicts are not conflicts of interest. Mr. Feinberg's paid contract position with PSBA is listed on the February 22 PSBA board documents. In my opinion, it's a conflict of interest, sitting as a school director and a board president. Mr. Feinberg, you are a decision maker. I'm just asking you, how is this not a conflict of interest? Additionally, I had sent four write to notes to gather information since it was not posted online, as our tax dollars are being used to fund them. Saris Christiansen stated that the equity team is not using funds from our district when, in fact, the July contract with Sage Wellness says otherwise. Contract shows parent equity meetings, five 90 minute sessions for $5,000. Transparency would be noted, and it's appropriate because anything that occurs in those meetings should be available to the public. I need to ask the board, where is the transparency? Where are the watchdogs for our children? When are you when are advocating for the taxpayers and not to have the school district be frivolous with our tax dollars? I'm asking for accountability and transparencies, and I'm asking for good education that's transparent and free of political agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a timer, sorry.
Next item on our agenda is board liaison reports. This evening, we have curriculum, facilities, and finance. So why don't we do them in alphabetical order? Curriculum?
So our curriculum liaison group met. Board members include myself, Dave Schwartz, and Sue Minji. We met on the 11th of May. Primarily, we met for about an hour, and I would say 99% of our time was talking with Miss Saxa about the presentation she's going to make tonight. Giving us an opportunity to ask questions. So I don't want to go into a lot of details on that because I think she's probably, is that true, going to spend a lot of time covering that. Okay. So if there is anything that isn't said, I'll make sure to say it at the end of the meeting. And then the only other thing that that we discussed was very briefly the strategic planning goals update. The strategic planning teams are currently meeting again after quite a long hiatus due to COVID and discussing their goals, and we should be expecting some updates coming in July. So thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Dave, facilities?
Hello there. Thank you very much. Yeah, a lot of a lot of good things in facilities. Meeting, I'll try to be fairly quick, but we met last last week on Thursday. It's my it's myself, Bridget Sal, and Larry. So we went through a review, first of all, of the sort of the possible solar panel installation at Lynwood Elementary that we mentioned a bit during our last meeting. Mr. Regal was there, raised some issues and concerns, and we got some more information as well. One of them was about additional insurance requirements for, you know, the the schools after adding the panels. He indicated that there would be a small increase in insurance. He also indicated that we do not have any more borrowing power for this year. Should there should should there be a financial outlay required in any way? Question about with not competitive bids would be required, competitive RFPs for solar panel installation. And also the need for detailed cost benefit analysis of the school itself. We also had a couple. We also got some additional information. We learned that that constellation, who is a provider of energy, does allow net metering, which basically means that if Lynwood generates more energy than it uses, we could credit that 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 power generated towards another facility that's relatively nearby. He also mentioned that district currently is purchasing 100% green energy. Now, we were joined, whoops, we were joined by Jen Saxa and Joy Baxter from from CEC. And one thing that Joy pointed out, and I'll point it out as well. While it's a great thing that that we're purchasing 100% green energy currently. One thing I think that's important to to note, and she indicated this as well. While we're purchasing green energy, that does not take carbon generated by by the energy providers out of the grid. There was a bit of a hierarchy. It's kind of like with a metaphor of recycling. Everybody's heard the reduced for use recycle. That is actually a hierarchy, in case you weren't aware of that. The first thing you want to do is reduce what you purchase. Next thing is reuse what you purchase. You don't have to buy more of it. And the last tier on that really is recycle. And there's a similar thing with with energy usage and generation. It's not quite as as a snappy or, or, you know, it's a bit more bulky, but there are similar tiers. And at lowest level, it would be some kind of an arrangement like a like carbon tax to basically pay others for to, you know, to to produce the carbon footprint that you have and pay others to try to reduce it. Second tier that, if you will, is buying green energy because that does encourage providers to produce more green energy. It doesn't directly impact anything, but does over time reduce the our carbon footprint. The next tier on that would be to reduce power usage, which we do. And the final tier, and really the best tier, is to produce your own your own energy. That that is the best of both worlds. You have the immediate impact on on reducing your carbon footprint, and to produce more energy than you than require, you can put that energy back into the grid. So that's kind of the reason for this. It's great. They're purchasing green energy. I'm all for it. I would, you know, support it, but the panels are a step above what we what we are doing already. Joy also addressed some of the some of the cost elements. Essentially, what what my understanding of this is, is that the CEC should should be the they be selected as a mechanism for this installation if we recommend it. They essentially would do the competitive RFP bidding for for contractor and essentially own the panels in the, you know, for for the first several years. What we would do, we would pay them essentially, President Ping Pico, we would pay the CEC. And they, after a certain amount of years, would give us the option to buy out the the panels. We saw, we talked a bit about some numbers, some kind of theoretical numbers. Initially, we'd probably be paying a little bit more, and then once the buyout occurs, eventually we would reach a break even point, and eventually we would be realizing all the savings of the energy of the energy degenerated. Their typical arrangements are for the district or whoever they're engaged with to purchase panels after six years, and then we would own them for the next seven to 25 or until their useful life ended, which is usually about 25 or 30 years. There are several ways that we could purchase them eventually, either through a bond issue or through capital funds. That's something for people who are much smarter than me at economics to figure out, but that is generally what the what the arrangement is. Now, if we do make a decision eventually and recommend this to the to the board, and if there's a vote on it and we approve it, the next step would be to enter into a non-binding MOU, a memorandum of understanding to begin the process. And CEC will begin to incur some of these costs, write up RFPs, start the design, all of those types of 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 things. Now, there are a few issues that that still are out there that we want to get resolved. One of the things that we want to find out, what other school districts who have done this, who have done this arrangement through a third party have experienced, what their issues are, what the opportunities are. And Brian Kaiser is the assistant business manager, is going to contact members of an organization called PASBO, which is the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials. And he's going to ask them who has installed panels through a third party, what some of the issues were. And, you know, what what kind of things we should be aware of if we should move forward with this process. Joy Baxter also wanted to verify the the details of constellations that metering to make sure that there's no distance requirements for different buildings and so forth. I don't think it could be an issue, but we want to want to make sure of that, dotting all the all the i's and crossing all of the t's. And also, I think we want a more detailed, oh, we we want a detailed assessment of of what will happen during summer operations. While schools are not open to students, they are open to other groups and other events. So we want to figure out what that would happen. I mean, obviously, in the summer, you have more energy being produced by panels. We want to make sure that that, you know, we would require the the energy that that will be provided from a solar installation. And then finally, we would want a detailed cost breakdown specific to Lynwood. Those are some of the things. It's very exciting. And, you know, as this moves forward, obviously, we'll give you some more details on this, but that is a moving target, but it's a, you know, great time to bring this up. We're getting into summer now. And we'll be looking at that as we in the next months ahead.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks for your report. Bridget?
Got it.
Hi, the finance liaisons who included Larry, Laura, Ari, and I met on the 10th with Dr. Rishi and Brian and Bob from the business department. We talked about three things. One is the 2122 budget. It is on track to be presented for final approval in June. There's been continued work to tighten the the expenditures so that we have a smaller use of fund balance or deficit than what we've previously seen. It's coming in at about $870,000 now. The timing should be for the first meeting in June, but there's a question about some of the reports from the county for the homestead. Homestead credit amount that need to be reconciled and be part of our final budget package. So there's a chance it might slip to June 17, but the district has done its part to prepare a a good budget for us to consider in June. We also looked at the current fiscal year's estimate for the fiscal year end, and looks like we are on track to generate a surplus of about one and a half million dollars. That's been helped with on the revenue side with additional real estate transfer tax income and some proceeds from insurance premiums being returned. On the expenses, expenses were under budget largely because of savings and salaries, but we also had increased costs for technology and software, charter schools, contracted services, and equipment that were needed to help the district respond to pandemic education models. When we look at the funds committed for capital projects being done around the district this summer of about $1.6 million and the projected surplus of about one and a half, the district's net assets or fund balance is expected to hold steady going into the new year. And then the third topic was looking at our food services business unit. This has been something that the business department has focused on trying to improve its financial position. The results for the current year aren't yet in, but it was understandably a very unusual year with the free meal distribution. So hardly any income came in. One of the things that was a surprise to me was that the federal government did not fully fund that that program for the meal distribution. So we need to figure out what amount of subsidy is available and what the year looks like for the food program, and also to plan for what our meal program will look like in the next school year and begin those discussions with Chartwells, who you might recall is our new food manager that we contract with.
Thank you, Bridget. Next item on the agenda is superintendent superintendent's remarks. Dr. Rishi?
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. The first portion of my remarks, I'd like to draw your attention to an item that appears later on in our agenda this evening. And that is actually a donation from Giant Food Stores in the amount of $22,422.13 from their Feeding School Kids Program. Joining us tonight is Sarah Hamel from representing Giant Food Stores. We asked Sarah if she would be willing to attend our meeting tonight so that she could, you know, know how appreciative we are of that that donation. And Sarah, maybe you could just, you know, very briefly tell us how that donation came came to be, and thank you for being here tonight.
So earlier this year, I guess Giant and the communities that we, you know, we have locations and that we serve decided that they wanted to donate to the Haver Town School District. And, you know, they whatever. And, you know, they whatever the $22,000, they asked me to go to the school and present a track to the school district for that amount and for you guys to accept it. I guess this meeting was a part of that, but they would like to have like a photo op and a press release. And I guess this was like a an interim of that, but you know, a part of our core values is, you know, feeding families and, you know, that's where you know, this money came from. And, you know, through the pandemic, they raised the money and they decided to give it back to you guys.
Great. Well, Sarah, thank you so much. And and we will certainly participate in a photo op. Whether it's you or contacting Anna Dega or Anna will reach, you know, reach out to to someone and and we will do our our best to facilitate that along with you and the folks from Giant. But I I wanted to bring it to the attention of our board members this evening. The item doesn't appear until later on in the agenda, and someone would probably ask if there's anyone from Giant here that that we can thank tonight. So before I go on, Mr. Feinberg, if you want to thank Sarah and Giant.
Thanks. Thanks for this very generous gift. It certainly comes at a at a propitious time and it'll be a big help to to our family. So thank you. Thanks. Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much. So Anna or someone will call so we can present a check and move forward with giving you guys like
Yeah, we will get that money, Sarah.
Okay, perfect.
Great. And thanks for being here this evening.
Okay, goodbye. Have a good night.
You too. Bye now.
I do have a few remarks, Mr. Feinberg, before we move on with our agenda tonight. As was mentioned by our student reporters, we did make families aware of a vaccine clinic that was being held for children between the ages of 12 and 15 out at Radnor High School. We again partnered with Radnor Marble Newtown through the Delaware County Intermediate Unit and Springfield Springfield Pharmacy. And, you know, had quite a few of our students vaccinated that way. And we realized that there are many other avenues through which parents can seek the vaccination and have have their children vaccinated. We have been asked about the numbers, and you did hear Zoe mentioned tonight, over seven, you know, 700 students. We know of the parents who express interest. We do not get a formalized list from Springfield Pharmacy due to privacy issues. So we, you know, we do not know who actually gets the vaccine. So that's an estimate on our part, just as we can estimate. We had somewhere between four and 500 students between the ages of 16 and 18 years of age, a little bit earlier, a few weeks ago, in for their first round of vaccine. But I do like some some folks have asked, can we get that information? And at the same time, other folks have said, you don't have access to that information, do you? So that there are privacy rights, you know, around that. No one is giving the district. We may, moving forward, ask parents who would be willing to volunteer that information and share it with us. But please, those who may be a little uneasy, no one is giving that information to the district about children who have or have not been been vaccinated. Mr. Donegey did, as he indicated, on May 10th, communicate plans for prom graduation out to the community. He has continued to meet with students and staff to refine some of the finer details of those two very important events for our students. And one of the looming questions understandably relates to the wearing of masks. There will be times when we are asking people to wear masks both during graduation and during prom. So bling the mask out for prom and 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 get it all coordinated with the outfit that you're wearing if you so choose. But students should have a mask with them. There will be times when they will be asked to wear them. And there are other times where where it will be fine for them to be with without the mask. With respect to graduation, if you have a senior, you certainly are aware that there are four tickets that we will be giving to each of the of the students. Graduation will be at the stadium, as was mentioned by Erica this evening. I just want to call attention to the fact that we have over 460 students graduating. 460 students each having four tickets. And then there are close to 150 between staff members, personnel there to run the event, board members, you know, who will all be in in attendance. That brings our total to 2,450 people who will be descending upon Mill Road on on June 10th for graduation. So a few things. Please do whatever you can to transport your family in one car, not several. You know, certainly those who live in the area, if if it's possible for you to walk, to walk. You each know the community well enough to know that we cannot accommodate multiple cars from each family who will be attending attending graduation that that evening. We've been asked a lot about inclement weather. A decision will be made by 3:30 in the afternoon. We are not going to wait until the very last minute and risk having people on the field. And then storms rolling in and telling people that they have to have to vacate the field. Because we will not have enough room, and this has nothing to do with social distancing. Our auditorium cannot accommodate 2,450 people. So we are not going to leave it until the until the last minute and make a decision and have people scrambling. At 3:30 in the afternoon, we will make the decision with the information that is available to us at that point in time. If the graduation needs to be indoors, it will be indoors for students only, but it will be livestreamed. So I suggest that parents, guardians and families have alternate plans that you can, you know, have this the celebration that way. There were a number of different possibilities that were discussed. Students were involved in the conversations. They even talked about, well, if it's inclement weather, should we go to the bus like we had, you know, had last year? And over and over again, the students reiterated how important it was for them to be together as a group. And they're, you know, celebrating with their families, something, you know, something that they certainly value as well. But they really didn't want the bus to be a way that would isolate all of them for such a such a momentous occasion. Mr. Donegey has ordered 2,500 ponchos in the event that there is a very light rain or drizzle. Because we 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 will not be wimps. If there's a light rain or drizzle, we will be out on that field so that we can all be together and and celebrating as as a community. Mr. Mr. Feinberg, I will say Mr. Donegey has told us that we will have a limit of two to three minutes for our remarks. Because they will be trying to keep every keep everything moving rather quickly in the event that we are there during some type of of inclement weather. So that's our update on graduation. This evening, we're going to be hearing from Jen Saxa about our how our district wide planning for the fall has been going. And I just want to reiterate now, our steadfast commitment to five full days of in-person instruction. We know that we're going to need a health and safety plan for the 2122 school year. We just learned of that today and are seeking more more details. We know that quarantining and contact tracing is going to be part of our world in the fall. And we remain mindful of the quantity of interactions that students, you know, may have. And we may look to minimize that in some way. But our goal is a commitment to five full days of in-person instruction. And remembering how important the social interaction aspect of school is to students. So if there are restrictions that we have to place on that, we also recognize the importance of it and will do so in a in a minimal way. That that five full day commitment may mean some rather substantive changes and massive undertaking on our part. You know, anywhere from a magnitude of modifications that could revamp entirely the secondary schedule. Or literally remove every single book from the library and find another location for the libraries and set them up as as cafeterias. No possibilities off the table in order to have the children at the secondary level in school, five days a week for for in-person instruction. This is not entirely post pandemic, and I think that's important for us to, you know, to remember. We've sort of been saying that it's not over. We certainly see light at the end of the tunnel. We are hopeful. And our messaging to students, you know, will be that we know what's important to them, what they value about the experience and how we can maintain that. So Jen will talk a little bit about that tonight, and I've also asked her to talk a little bit about why we don't want parents to be exceedingly worried about summer school. And we really believe that our students, our staff, we as a community, as families, need the summer. And we need it not to be heavily involved in school. So we have looked at how we can create those opportunities for post pandemic learning needs and what the pandemic has created in terms of learning needs and provide those opportunities throughout the school day next year. It's not dependent upon when the children are available. It's not dependent upon them getting transportation to something during this during the summer. So Jen will speak briefly about that as well this evening. So thank you for this opportunity to summarize a little bit of that and talk about graduation, Mr. Feinberg.
Thanks, Dr. Rishi. So we'll look forward, the board will look forward to getting those water resistant caps and gowns.
Yes. Yes, because they could be very heavy.
Next item on our agenda is construction update from Ken Matthews.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Just a brief update tonight. I'll start with the high school. You can see behind me, things are moving along very well. The roof's on, the building is, I wouldn't say quite watertight, but pretty darn close. We're starting drywall here within a week or so. It's hard to believe, but in basically three months, it needs to be done. So a lot needs to happen, but we're on track, we're on schedule, and things are moving along, which is great. We have just a few change orders this evening for the high school. If anybody had any questions about them.
Questions from the board?
All right. And then for Linwood, again, you know, Linwood needs to be finished basically at the same time, three months from now. So we're looking inside the building is is just about wrapped up, cleaning things up, doing final cleaning. Furniture is coming next week for the entire building. So really, you know, get to see, see it start filling up and come to life. We're finishing up a lot of items in the cafeteria as well. That's kind of the last area to finish up over the next month or two. And then the site work will begin and as soon as school ends, within a few days, move out of the existing building. And then basically come July 1st, we'll start demolishing the old Linwood and start preparing the the new parking lot. And then before you know it, by mid August, it will be done and ready for the students this fall.
That sounds sounds great, Ken. Now, if you need some help, I with the high school project, I understand on June 10th, we're going to have a couple thousand people in that neighborhood. So if you can think of something that where they might be able to help out, you just let us know, okay?
We'll we'll open the parking lot covered with dirt for a few spaces. But there are, there are two, a few minor change orders for the high school as well, if anybody had any questions.
Questions from the board?
And just to comment, I've been, I've had reason to go over to the high school and it's impressive how much it's taken shape. You can see where the new parking is and then the the building looks great. And from kind of the backside there, it fits in really nice. I know it's a significant addition, but it's I'm excited to see when it's got the same, you know, brick and facade on it, not just the insulation panels there, but it really looks like, you know, it was meant to be there all along.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments from the board? Kristen?
Yeah, quick question. So I think looking at the structural supports, I'm thinking about the high school. I just found it a little bit strange that there were some things missing from the plans that are now being added afterward. Is that common in this process? To have the design team kind of oversee structural supports?
Kristen, it's always a question that comes up on every job. You know, we don't, we always say we don't hire perfect architects and engineers. The drawings are, you know, in 2D. They do have, you know, three dimensional plans that they use to kind of model the building. But, you know, it's an imperfect process and, you know, if you had two years to design a building and we we could go through the drawings and find every little tiny mistake and have perfect drawings, then the architect fees would probably be double and triple what they are. And that so that's why we have contingency. So there will be little nuances like that. And we want to be sure that they're within below a certain threshold that they don't become, okay, there are really some bad mistakes that cost, you know, ridiculous amount of money. So we weigh that and we monitor that. And, you know, these projects are well below the threshold of having any concern for, you know, going after an architect for errors and omissions because of, you know, egregious mistakes. So we're well below that. These are typical things that come up.
Thanks. Glad someone caught it.
No problem.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, Ken. Well, I hope you have good weather for the rest of the building season and
Yes, we need that.
Godspeed.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Next on our agenda. Planning for fall 2021. Saxa?
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. Good evening, everyone. We thank you for this opportunity to be sharing what our planning is, and we're happy that it's for fall 2021. Looking eagerly forward at where we will be going next. Before we do begin that overview of our current planning, I did want to share with you the approach that we're taking to both health and safety and our post pandemic learning. As we all know, these past 15 months or so, we've experienced many sudden shifts that required us to be adaptable. We recognize that the requirements and guidelines may continue to change. And and with that in mind, we are planning according to what we know about current safety and health guidelines. We found that it is more efficient to plan for a more restrictive setting and then adjust from backward from there rather than to start with no precautions and then need to put those in place later. We are very excited to return to what will feel much more like a normal school experience for students at every level, that is. And we will remain mindful, of course, of the need to continue some of our health and safety practices. Our educational approach to post pandemic learning is really looking at it, how it can work for all students. We know that students experienced the pandemic very differently, depending on their circumstances and how it might have affected them. And so we will be addressing their needs throughout the school day and the school year, as Dr. Rishi mentioned. We're eager to build on some of those 21st century skills that we learned very quickly this year as we enter into a new year and a new post pandemic world of learning even beyond next year. Particularly with our elementary students who are not currently approved for vaccination, it will be prudent to just contemplate a possibility of a resurgence or some other issues in the fall. So we are moving forward with our plans so that we can maintain five full days of in-person learning for all students. We will continue to be mindful of the mitigation strategies that support student health. This includes keeping to a minimum the number of student groups that intermingles throughout the day. For example, we're going to continue our practice of not grouping or of grouping students heterogeneously. So we're going to continue with the heterogeneously or not leveled grouping for next year for math and English language arts. That reduces the number of times that students are in a classroom with a different set of students. Of course, there will be times during the day where they are in classrooms with students who are not in their homeroom. But it's our goal to just keep that to the to a minimum, to whatever the extent is that that is possible. That'll reduce exposure for students and it will also help us with the potential for quarantining and will help, we hope, to prevent And will help, um, we hope to, uh, prevent students from having an overabundance of that. We can go to the next slide now, Anna. Thanks. As I mentioned, uh, it is our plan for students to experience, I'm not sure, yep, I am, that five full days of in-person learning. Uh, and in addition to returning to a normal schedule, we're also planning for a system of supports that will address the, the learning needs that students will come to us after having a year of pandemic learning. Uh, and this is intended to be supportive of all students. A, a task force has actually been convened to devise what we call a framework that will help us expand and enhance an elementary intervention and enrichment, or what we call I and E period, that occurs during the school day. Uh, this 45 minute period will be set aside for all students to receive targeted intervention or enrichment based on whatever their demonstrated needs are. Whether that's going to be building to get to a grade level skill, maintaining a grade level skill, or even working a little bit beyond that grade level skill. All students will experience some sort of intervention or enrichment during that 45 minute period. Uh, progress during this intervention time will be measured periodically and students will be able to move among and between those groups periodically as well. Uh, because each, uh, child's pandemic learning experience was different, we anticipate that there will be a greater variation of needs, um, in the next school year specifically. Uh, we plan to dedicate some grant funding to utilize some additional personnel and resources during this I and E time for the 21 and 20, 21, 22 school year. Uh, this will allow us to create some smaller groups and, uh, provide uh, a few additional interventions that we believe might be needed in that first year back from, uh, to a, a more regular school experience. Um, after next school year, we will continue with the expanded I and E time. However, we will not, uh, believe, we, we do not believe we will need the additional staffing. We will not be requesting the additional staffing for years following that because we really expect to see a return to sort of the more typical variety of needs that we would, uh, experience in any year of schooling. In examining how much of the curriculum students were able to access this year, uh, we were pleased to see that most of the curriculum was covered in our subjects. Um, we did see one area where we feel that an adjustment for all students in a grade would be beneficial versus addressing an individual student need. Um, and that is, uh, with our current second graders. So they completed most of what's called foundations or which is our foundational kind of phonics program this school year. Uh, but rather than sort of rush through the program to try and get to the end, we, we paused ourselves, uh, a week or so or a few weeks back. Uh, so that students could really dig in and make sure they had these very important foundational skills. And so what we're going to do is take the pieces of the second grade foundations, uh, curriculum, and we're going to all learn it as third graders. And, and the really great thing about that is we are going to get some training for our third grade teachers in this foundations programming. And that will not only help them next year as they, uh, deliver that instruction, but it will help them always because they will be more familiar with what their students are coming to them with, having experienced that foundations for the prior two years. Um, we are going to take a look at what word study is in third grade, which is what follows phonics. And we're just going to compact that down a little bit, making sure that students still get what they need out of word study so that they can, you know, return to a typical, um, experience of that in their, uh, fourth grade year and beyond. So we only see this adjustment as having, as being necessary for, for one year. Um, finally, for the elementary, we will continue and expand some of our wellness supports, uh, including, um, social emotional learning classes. You may be familiar with the term guidance class. Uh, our school counselors have, at the elementary level, have, um, decided that we will rename those and really more accurately call them social and emotional learning classes, because those are the skills that they are learning using a castle framework, which is social emotional learning framework as well. Um, we will continue to, uh, implement responsive classroom and morning meeting and build on those skills. We have training for teachers every year as we have a new goal with our responsive classroom implementation. Um, and, and we know that it is important to really, um, continue to find opportunities for students to learn and practice these skills as they didn't have quite the same social experiences as they did this year. And so they'll need to continue to, to build those, um, skills throughout next year as well. Okay, our approach to secondary health and safety is pretty similar to the elementary level. Uh, during their five days, five full days, I should say, per week of in-person instruction, students will see some ongoing mitigation strategies, but they'll also have a, a more usual school experience. At the middle school, we will look to reduce the mixing of student groups, being mindful of the contacts that students have. Um, this will include increasing the heterogeneous groupings of students so that they are not required to go to a different class with a different set of students just because of its level. Just as a reminder, many sixth grade students will be under 12 years old. And as of this moment, we don't know if they will be able to be vaccinated. Uh, in all grades, we will need to continue protocols of quarantining and look for ways to prioritize students' health and safety, all while trying to get back to what we hope will be that typical school day. Uh, we do plan to keep an eye on whatever new guidelines come out, uh, for us, and even for summer camps or whatever other child center activities are out there, so that we can get a, a better, um, idea of what we might expect would be a requirement or suggested mitigation strategy as we enter the fall. Um, also, as you heard Dr. Rishi mention in her remarks, we are currently investigating how best to approach lunch in order to return to that full day of in-person learning. Uh, we know we will need to use additional spaces than, than what we traditionally do. Um, that means that we will require some additional lunch monitors, just like we had to ask for folks to help out at the elementary level. We will be looking for folks to help at the, uh, secondary level as well. Uh, we'll use partitions, whether that's Plexiglas or another type, wherever is necessary. And, uh, we are working, our, our principals and, and leadership staffs are working closely with our food service folks to find efficient ways for students to still procure their lunches, um, even though they'll be in multiple locations. Those principals and facility teams are working hard just to determine how we can keep students as far away as possible during lunch. Um, and believe that it can be done at a distance of five feet. So that's what we're working on right now. Uh, we are contemplating the need of tent, of the, the use of tenting at the secondary level. Uh, but we do recognize the challenges of keeping a tent space cooled in the warmer weather and then heated in the, uh, cooler weather and, um, how we could do so appropriately if we did need to use that as an alternative. Uh, so when it comes to the, uh, post pandemic learning at, uh, the secondary level, uh, I, I can report that by and large, our secondary teachers have shared that they were able to address most areas of the curriculum this year. Uh, students may not have read as many novels or completed as many projects, but teachers have anecdotally reported so far that students have learned the major concepts and skills this year, uh, as they would in another year. Uh, we do recognize that e- even if we met most of those goals, there will be students who require some additional support next year. So in order to meet the needs of those students who may or may not have met the course or grade level expectations for math or English at the secondary level, we're going to expand our already successful in-school tutoring program. Um, this will allow students to experience small group tutoring during the school day. Our middle school has actually used this model for a number of years, uh, and with grant funding, we hope to expand it to meet the unique needs of our first post pandemic school year. With this model, teachers would provide small group tutoring to the students to reteach and reinforce skills from either the prior or the current grade. Students would qualify for the additional tutoring through their grades, uh, through assessments, through state or local, um, tests and screens. Uh, we will monitor student progress over the course of the tutoring sessions and students would move in and out according to their progress. Uh, current literature actually suggests that tutoring is highly effective and that about 10 hours is usually sufficient to address specific needs. So by offering this to students during school hours, we eliminate some of the challenges of after-school programs. Like you heard Dr. Rushi mentioned, transportation. Often students, especially at this age group, have conflicts with, uh, after-school activities, jobs, other responsibilities at home, caring for siblings and such. Uh, and that can, that can prevent them part, from participating in after-school activities fully, which is why we wanted to use this as our approach so that they did not have to depend on that in order to get any support that they may need. Uh, as you have heard, our approach to supporting students post pandemic is to provide additional and expanded services during the school day uh, and the school year. So we don't want student access to such supports to be dependent upon their summer availability. Uh, many of our students and families and teachers will be taking the summer as a much needed break to rest and recharge, uh, for a new school year. We are, however, continuing to offer our traditional summer programming. And as you can see here, our elementary program is designed to provide a bit of maintenance and practice while our high school students, uh, can take summer courses in order to recoup some credits or to advance further in their course of study. You've heard me mention grant funding a few times tonight. Uh, I'm referencing the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. And while we expect to receive somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars, we have not had any official communication about the finer details of this grant. Um, we expect more detailed guidance. I've heard a rumor that it's coming next week. Uh, and we will, um, we believe that there will be certain allowable, uh, uses for the funds. Earlier iterations of this grant have required that the funds are used to support the reopening, uh, of schools and address academic, social, and emotional needs that are resulting from COVID-19. Uh, the supports that we will gain through this funding will allow us to address the very particular needs of the next school year. And we will not be seeking to utilize these resources beyond that timeframe. An important part of our, our planning for fall 2021 included reflecting on the current school year. Educators are cultivating lists now of what they believe should be, we should keep, cut, and create or grow as our approach to teaching and learning evolves. Principals have been gathering reflections from parents and guardians through home and school associations, as well as speaking with student groups to hear their perspectives as well. Some of the initial teacher reflections that we've collected include continuing the use of what we call one-to-one devices, where each child has a laptop or a tablet. Uh, we do expect that students will continue using their devices as a tool for learning throughout next year and beyond. Uh, and while we don't have a set yet of expectations for that specifically, uh, we are engaging those conversations with our tech mentors and our teachers as we close out the year. Um, using Zoom for students who need to quarantine, as well as for parent guardian conferences, faculty meetings, uh, and even on occasion, when it means that we can break down the classroom walls and, um, expose students to, uh, activities, tours, uh, people from around the world. Uh, we do plan to continue that work and, and the teachers have talked about what that would be, what, how Zoom makes that possible. Many teachers are, have also reflected on how to modify our approach to assessment, finding ways for students to demonstrate that they've truly learned the material and skills. School leaders are looking at, um, what structures worked well this year and we're, are considering, how can we carry those, uh, into the future? For example, uh, how can homeroom be, time at the high school be used? Um, where might we be able to continue the concept of office hours, which so many students found to be beneficial this year? Uh, another potential grant funded element is providing additional mental health support for next school year via a licensed professional counselor who's acting as an interventionist uh, for those presenting with risk factors that are coming about due to the pandemic. Such mental health support would include coping strategies or other methods that would be helpful prior to the, a referral for more intense mental health support. As a staff, we will continue to reflect on what to carry forward and what to leave behind as we take full advantage of all the possibilities that really have become evident through a major disruption to education and schooling that we've experienced. And this includes assessing the need for continued virtual learning opportunities. Uh, we surveyed those currently in our virtual learning, uh, programs within our schools, which is about 1,100 students, a little bit more, or about 16% of our total population, just to see what they anticipate that their need will be next year. And, and based on the feedback that we received, we feel fairly confident that we will need to program for about approximately 110 students across the district. Uh, that's about 10% of those who are currently enrolled virtually and about one and a half percent of the whole district population. Interestingly, the proportions of those expressing the need to remain, uh, within virtual learning are very similar to the proportions that are currently in virtual learning. About half are elementary, about half are secondary. Uh, so it's an interesting way that that breaks down. So considering the scale of the anticipated need and the available resources, we plan to build on the success of the Haverford online model that was actually in place prior to the pandemic to provide large, virtual learning next year. Um, this will include asynchronous learning through Pearson or possibly in some cases through our own Canvas courses, which teachers have, uh, continue to develop. A Haverford teacher will be assigned to support, track, and check in regularly with students. Um, this will include live interactions with the teacher and opportunities for contact throughout the week. Students will continue to have access to all supports and resources that are available at the buildings and they will remain a part of their neighborhood school community through their partis- participation in activities if, if they so choose. Um, there may be some cases where a course is unique and unavailable in an asynchronous format for some reason. And if that occurs, we will certainly work with teachers to determine how a student might access that class, maybe through Zoom or maybe another way. Uh, and that's similar to the way that, um, students sometimes will pursue an independent study course, uh, that's not available when they need to take it or something like that at the high school level. Another element to our planning includes ascertaining how many students will return to us from other placements. Uh, our, our outreach to these families is ongoing. And so far, we know of four students who do not plan to return from cyber schools, 10 who will, and we are awaiting confirmation from about 20 more. Of those who chose homeschooling this year, we know of six who actually were our students prior to, uh, COVID-19, um, that will remain in homeschooling next year. 35 have confirmed they're coming on back to the brick and mortar buildings, which we're excited about. And we're awaiting further information from just a few remaining families that are homeschooling now. So here's my plug. If you or anyone you know is interested in learning more about our virtual programming for next year, please reach out to Mr. Amarino. You can see his, um, email on this page, but it's also on our website if you just look for Haverford Online. Um, and if you're looking for information about returning to an actual school building, please go ahead and reach out to the building principal. Uh, we'd be happy to give you whatever information that you need or answer whatever questions that we can uh, so that you can make what, an informed decision about what is right for you and your, your family. So one of the more fun tasks of planning, uh, it, for the fall is developing activities that will welcome students back to school. And as you can see here, we have several activities already in the works and our building teams are really working to create warm and welcoming opportunities for new and for existing students and families. As always, we plan professional learning based on our, uh, our own performance data, our teacher surveys, and our strategic planning. Uh, this spring, we're going to engage and we are going to continue engaging in directed reflections, which we will use for next year's programming. This summer, we'll offer some opportunities to learn about curriculum adjustments, read professional books and literature, and learn more about tech, instructional technology tools, as well as other, uh, professional development opportunities. Uh, this fall, we're excited that we're going to get to start the year with what we're calling a learning fair. And that's where teachers will share some artifacts from this year that represent the kind of teaching and learning experiences that they want to continue and grow into the future. Uh, our strategic plan action steps will kick off next year and our planning teams will be sharing more about that in our fall professional development as well. And we will share a few more strategic planning updates with the board in July at a, a, a larger presentation about that. So one of the reflections that I've heard most often in these past couple of days is that we have learned just how resilient our students are. Teachers have been sharing stories about students who learn new ways to interact, new ways to share, new ways to create, collaborate, advocate for themselves. We know that this is not only a credit to our students, but also due to the incredible support from their families as well. I would be remiss if I didn't note the incredible resilience, dedication, passion, and professionalism of our staff. In a year when nothing was certain, the one thing our students could depend on was their teachers. And despite the need to learn entirely new technology, pedagogy, materials, strategies, our teachers, counselors, therapists, nurses, and other educators all just kept smiling for students. They kept connecting with students, and they were focusing on what was most important. Our principals and leaders marshaled us through changes that could not have been possible without their empathetic and thoughtful and gracious leadership. Our support staff, food service staff, facilities, maintenance crews, business and HR departments all learned to function in a whole new way, just so that our students could learn safely. And of course, our technology department worked constantly and tirelessly to support staff, students, and families, all while setting up training for and maintaining new and old systems. So, I just want to take this opportunity to just say how grateful we are to our community and to this board for your support of our students, of our employees, and of each other. We've learned so much, and these words, which are attributed to Helen Keller, have certainly proven to be true. Alone, we can do so little, and together, we can do so much. And we have, you know, there's always more to do, and we will always continue learning and improving and evolving, all as we serve the students of the community of Haverford Township. So, we thank you for all of your support, for this opportunity to share our fall planning with you this evening.
Jen, I think I could speak for the board to echo those thanks to the, to the whole community, to, to our students, our staff, and certainly, I think as board members, we, we have a, an acute appreciation for the, for the, the work that our administration and our principals have done over the past 14 months, and we thank everybody. Questions from the board? Laura?
Jen, one thing that hasn't come up yet that we haven't talked about, and you may not have an answer yet, do we have a sense of what extracurriculars might look like for the fall? I know some of them have been virtual-only. We may not know because there's so many things that we still don't know, which is unsatisfying. But if you have any thoughts on that now, or you want to follow up later, once we know more about health and safety plans and requirements, any of that would be good.
Great, unless Dr. Ruchi wants to join in, if she knows something, I don't. I do believe that this is something that's still under development as we learn more about what will be required and that newly published idea of a health and safety plan for next year.
Which, which it will be, will be guided by, but you know, our focus will be return to what we had in 2019 with, you know, with students as close as we can get to that, unless there's, you know, some of those mitigation factors may need to be in place.
Great, thanks.
Antoinette?
Thanks, and yeah, I really do want to say thank you to everyone for everything they've done, and especially for putting together this presentation. I think it really just shows how much planning is going into next year and how much needs to go into it, just because of where we are. You know, I am disappointed to see how much mitigation efforts still need to go forward, and I'm sure that that's an effect being caused by a lot of different factors, including the guidance that we're still under. So, I guess my question is just how flexible all of these plans are, given that I feel like in the last few months, things have changed so quickly, right? Like we saw the CDC just come out with the masking guidance that was totally out of the blue, it felt like. And so, you know, with things like, like, one of the things that's disappointing to hear is that there won't be leveling in the elementary schools, you know, and just to hear about what needs to be done with like the lunchrooms and things like that. And so, you know, just if we could hear a little bit about the flexibility in these plans and the ability to pivot if, if we get guidance that says that we could.
Sure, I'll take the two examples that you used there. When we're taking a look at what the cafeteria could look like and the use of Plexiglas and having to be so many feet apart, et cetera. The, our approach is to plan for that worst-case scenario, which is our current, and then it would be easier for us to be able to fit more students in the cafeteria, get them to seats, be seated closer. And that is one of those examples where we might find it a little bit more easy to shift more quickly, although it will still take time to move furniture around and do all of that. When it comes to something like leveling, we, we have, you know, we sort of thought through, you know, how can you approach it? And, and one of the things that our teachers do every May is they set up class lists, right? And they make recommendations. And so, they are doing that based on this idea of hetero, heterogeneous grouping for the year. Now, we went through that this year as well, so it's not a change for teachers from this year. It's actually, the only places that we were continuing to level were, I believe, in third through fifth math. And ELA, we are, already had sort of worked leveling out of that as much as it had been in math before. But it is a little less able to be flexible, only because it's challenging to shift those groups once the students are already moving at a certain pace and learning, and then sometimes classes, one class will get a little ahead, one class will be a little bit. And then, you know, once you start the school year, and now you're sending them off to different classes, you can't be sure they've sort of all been through the same things. So, we typically like to make a commitment to something like that for a year and then start collecting, you know, as we're going, what's working, how do we want to proceed from there?
Right, and okay, I, I totally understand that. I'm sure everyone does. It is something that, that needs consistency. And so, I guess that's, you know, tying into your presentation on like that INE period, that's really where the students who otherwise would be leveled would be getting some sort of, I mean, I'm going to call it a level, but like some sort of guidance, you know, that, that is maybe closer to their level at that, at that period.
Yeah, so the idea there is that what, what the learning is that occurs during that time period is targeted based on an actual student need. So, you know, for example, I'm learning to read. One of the components of learning to read is to read quickly enough that the words come out and make sense, right? It's called fluency, and you can read with expression. And maybe I need to work on fluency a little bit, so I might get six weeks of working on fluency in different ways in this intervention enrichment period. And then, if I've met that need, and I'm now, you know, fluent as, as compared with benchmarks, then I might move on to a comprehension group next. So, it would be a really a targeted piece that's focused on a set of skills that, that a group of students demonstrates some need around. Likewise, there could be groups that are literature circles, or there might be groups that, you know, are, are, you know, at all, operating at all different levels depending on that demonstrated need.
Thanks, I always appreciate how much these are thought through, so thanks so much.
Sure, my pleasure.
Next, Bridgette?
Thank you, yes, and thank you for the presentation. I think it touched on a lot and raises again, just, you know, school isn't just about the ABCs and 1-2-3s, but the social, emotional, the health and safety, the community building. It's nice to hear how there is thought and attention going into, you know, lifting that up and really kind of building on, on those opportunities that were harder to generate this year. Wanted just to clarify, I think for the community, throughout the presentation, even talking about elementary, it was like five full school days. Just to be clear, elementary, kindergarten is still the half-day.
Yeah, thank you.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yes, thank you, very important, still half-days, yes.
And I did want to ask the, with the Haverford Online, and I think it's good to plan ahead and, and certainly to get the, the feedback of, of parents and families to see what the plans are for next year. I was curious with the breakout and about half of the students planning online for next year being elementary school, and how big of a change is that from when we had had Haverford Online before kind of pandemic learning situation?
Yeah, we had very few students taking it at the elementary level. It was really a case-by-case basis for, maybe for one subject, which is one of the reasons we moved to Pearson as the asynchronous provider, because our previous provider didn't offer a program at the elementary level. So, using Pearson or our own Canvas courses actually even allows that to happen. And, and you know, we're going to keep an eye on those numbers and, and you know, see if that's, that's really what comes in. But we do recognize that we want to be able to give, you know, regular contact to those kids, particularly at those younger ages, and really have someone, you know, working with them closely, even throughout the asynchronous process.
Okay, great. And then, for the high school, I know this year, the Haverford Online is able to kind of zoom in with the class that's in person. Would the kind of planning for next year kind of continue that hybrid? There will be regular class attendance in person and some regular kids that, you know, might be zooming into that class?
That would be more the exception to the rule than the rule for next year. There will be cases where, I always use French 3, like they, you know, the word language department probably laughs at me, but you know, there are certain courses where it's, it's challenging to get that as an asynchronous course, it's at such a high level. So, just as they might apply to do an independent study with a, with a teacher, we may be able to work out a scenario where that is the format of the independent study, depending on the course. I will say that even across the county, as I've had, and actually tri-county area, a couple of meetings with Bucks County, Montgomery County, the reality of dividing attention between the Zoomers and the Roomers and doing that regularly is something that really needs to be developed. It's, it's, you know, our teachers did an amazing job with that, our students did an amazing job with it. But before we would be ready to really offer that on a more permanent basis, we wouldn't want to really learn more about how to make it the most effective. But we're certainly open to doing it, like I mentioned, on that case-by-case basis.
Okay, yeah, no, that, that makes sense, and I think it sounds like a good strategy. I am thinking back to before March 2020, when there were kind of discussions statewide about, you know, what education should look like, what kind of initiatives there should be, and one of them was that, you know, all high school students should take at least one online class, that experience of, of learning like they will someday far in the future when they, you know, are taking advanced studies or for their job. And it's impressive to like, think now how all of our kids have that experience, we're thrown into it, and the way that you said, like, we can kind of build on the things that work to give kids variety of ways to learn and access information and to build some skills that will be useful after their, their high school days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bridgette. Ari?
More of a comment. While all this is great, and thank you, Jen, and the rest of the administration for putting this together, I'm not going to tie my horse to this cart just yet. Everything's going to change. So, while we heard great information and we're making plans now for the fall, I just want to remind everybody in the community that's paying attention, it's going to change.
One thing we've learned is that we need to be prepared for change. So, we, we will be there and working, you know, working to make sure we keep things updated as we learn new information.
Thanks, and next up, Kristin?
Thanks, Jen and Dr. Ruchi, thank you so much for this presentation. I know a lot of people in the community had questions about this and what next year's going to look like as they're making decisions for what, you know, what their children will be doing next year and what schooling will look like for them. So, thank you for that. So, looking at slide four with the, thinking about intervention and the, the INE period, that's fabulous, I'm so glad to hear that. But I'm also wondering, what is like tier-one core instruction going to look like? How will it be enriched to help support all students that are outside of these intervention blocks?
Sure.
And help make up, make up for this, this year?
Yeah, yeah, that is certainly something our teachers are already having conversations about. Our ELA teachers sort of had these meetings where second grade met with third grade, and then first grade met with second grade and that kind of thing to just sort of talk through, here's where we are, here's what we think we need to focus on. Our core instruction is, I mean, that's part of the curriculum cycle, is to take a look at the core and make sure that what we're doing is appropriate, research-based, working, that kind of thing. As you know, we implemented some new math resources this year. One of the reasons is we were looking at them anyway, and another reason was they were really, they were made for the online component that we were engaged in. And then, as we became more in-person, we did shift that to be a more paper pencil piece. So, we are, that is actually one of the things the teachers reflected, one of the most common reflections was continuing with Zern for math, and they sound familiar to elementary families out there, Eureka Math. And so, that programming was already something that we were building to be something more robust. The ELA, we have in that time period, what's called, you know what guided reading is, but guided reading is, other people might know about, they're called small groups. And so, that's a time built into the elementary English Language Arts period where students read books on their instructional level, they are asked questions that are designed to support them at their instructional level, and then they are expected to make progress to other instructional levels throughout the year. So, really, the first component of anything like an INE program is the solid core. And then, it's when the solid core isn't working for all students, what do you have as another sort of safety net? And that's where the INE will come in for students who require intervention or enrichment based on that core.
Great, thank you. And just one other question, I'm so happy to see that, you know, Castle and their curriculum is going to be a piece of all of this, and that there's that real focus on social, emotional learning and responsive classroom. I am wondering, what are we doing to support teachers' mental health? Because I, as we all know, they've been through so much.
They really have, and I think that is something that we do need to continue to focus on, just as a, you know, as a school community, as a nationwide public, you know. We have taken some steps this year to be very aware of that. I just give you an example, our last professional development day on Tuesday did contain a period of time that was dedicated to self-care, and so, we had a variety of options for folks to engage in, anything from, you know, meditation. We had one of our art teachers offer, you know, using art to decompress as a little mini-session. We had some webinars folks could attend. So, we're really looking at ways that we can make that a regular part of our practice, is that we're looking at self-care and we're, we're looking at taking care of, you know, the people who put themselves out there so much, our teachers, our counselors, you know, it's, it's, it's easy to get tired, and they didn't let themselves get tired. So, we do want to care for them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from the board? Jen, I have a softball for you.
Yeah, great.
You could just refresh, how many students did we have in Haverford Online pre-COVID? And what was our peak during COVID?
So, you know, they go in and out throughout the year, sometimes with pre-COVID, we would have about 60 kids in a Haverford Online, almost all secondary, you know, one or two exceptions. We had 1,164 kids in last count in Haverford Online this school year.
Thank you. Okay, well, this was a great presentation. Thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
That moves us into finance and facility section of the meeting. I'll accept a motion to approve disbursements from the funds as listed.
Move.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to accept the recommendation of the project architect KCBA and Associates, Inc., and owner's representative CB Development Services, Inc., and authorized change orders totaling $24,109.02 as listed.
It's moved.
First in second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the purchase of an upgraded school bus maintenance communication system through Communication Systems and Solutions, Inc., at a cost of $75,200. at a cost of $75,224 plus tax and an additional monthly charge of $1,705.25 plus tax, which is the state contract pricing through the Co-Stars program.
Snodgrass moved. Larson, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I actually have a good question. Why do we, most of the things that I'm assuming in terms of public education are tax-free? Why is this plus tax? I haven't, I don't remember seeing that very often in in our finance.
That shouldn't include tax. There might be, there might be a communication tax as opposed, there's no sales tax on it.
Okay.
Okay. But if there, if there is sales tax, I'll, they'll have to be removed. But I, there could be some kind of FCC.
Oh.
You know, type of. I'll find out.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to accept a donation from Giant Food Stores in the amount of $22,422.13 from their Feeding School Kids program.
Carson moved.
First second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Could we hear again how these funds might be applied?
Bridget, we don't have a lot of information from Giant. If there aren't, you know, any restrictions or if there are some restrictions, if it's supposed to be used in terms of feeding, feeding families, then we would partner with the Ed Foundation and our social workers to get that in that information out. This came very quickly to to our attention and we wanted to move on it before our, you know, before our June, June meeting to get to get the funds.
Make sure when we. Make sure when we do the presentation ceremony, it's a big check, really big.
Kristen?
Is there a possibility that this money could be used to subsidize our free and reduced lunch program?
It is a possibility that we could use it with families, yes, qualifying for free and reduced, free and reduced lunch.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to accept the retirements and resignations as listed.
Snodgrass moved. Kristen, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the following appointments as listed.
Move.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the leave requests as listed.
Move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the contract of Ms. Jennifer Saxa as Assistant Superintendent for a five-year period beginning July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2026 under the terms and conditions set forth in the employment agreement between Ms. Saxa and the Board of School Directors.
Move.
Chris, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
We're fortunate to have her in the district. I think the presentation she just did is just one example of, you know, the fine work that she does and the presentations that we get and for the board and the community are always so thorough and the passion that you feel for your work and for our students always comes through. And I'm glad to see that you are, your contributions are being recognized with this change in title.
Congrats, Jen. Very, very well deserved. Your, as Bridget said, your enthusiasm definitely comes through. So it's it's appreciated.
It's a pleasure to be able to do this and we thank you for for all your good work. All in favor?
Wholeheartedly. Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Jen. We look forward to a long relationship.
Yes, please.
Next item on our agenda. I'll accept the motion to approve the schedule of board meetings for the 2021-2022 school year.
Larson moved.
Twist second.
In second. Any discussion?
Are we really meeting on St. Patrick's Day?
And St. Patrick's. I don't think that we should, but I don't get the only vote.
I know. The Irish side of my family might be upset.
Question is, where are we meeting at St. Patrick's Day? That could change things.
I do have a question about July. And I'm happy to see that there's not four meetings in July like there was last year. But I do, I am cognizant of the fact, I think there used to be one meeting in July. And so I just, you know, wanted to know what was behind putting two in July this year.
Yep, great question. Two meetings predominantly to keep the hiring moving and and also bill payments. So we have, we have experienced, however, more so in pre-COVID times, that when we have a month lapse between June and whatever time we're meeting in July, that we risk losing some candidates who typically do not give notice to their current employer until they are formally approved by by the board. So we'll, one of those meetings will be a short meeting because we will just do it to keep, keep hiring moving and the bill list.
Famous last words, but I appreciate.
You'll hold me to it, right?
I also like that at the beginning, it says all the meetings will be held at 50 East Eagle Road. And so I think we'll soon be hearing in this meeting our plans to return to in-person board meetings. But I like the outlook for all of next year that we will be meeting in person.
Any other discussion?
I think Susan, Sal, and Ari have circled the November 18th meeting. Just wanted to point that out.
You can come to all of them. I mean, now you have the dates, you can just put them on your calendar.
I'm coming to St. Patrick's Day. I don't know, you guys are talking about having it somewhere else. I'm definitely going.
Sal's providing entertainment. He'll be singing.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Board reports. I won't forget them this meeting. Antoinette?
Thanks. I don't have a report. I just want to thank everyone in the community for getting vaccinated. We've really seen lowering cases in Delaware County and around Pennsylvania and the country. And so thank you to everyone who's done that and to everyone who is going to. It is much appreciated and your community thanks you.
Ari?
Thank you, Larry, and thank you, Antoinette, for starting the vaccination party. For anyone out there who really wants to see the most normal-looking school year next year, our best chance is to get as many people, not just students, but as many people in Haverford Township vaccinated. The science is out and the data is real. I believe this week they just released some statistics that the the states, the top 10 states with the highest vaccination rates saw the steepest decline in in new COVID cases. So thank you to Springfield Pharmacy as well for reaching out to Dr. Rushi as well as working with the DCIU and being so forthcoming about their participation in helping school districts throughout Delaware County get as close to on the path to a normal school year next year as possible.
Thanks, Ari. Dave?
Ari, still my friend there about the vaccinations. My daughter was one of the recipients this past week. So yes, once again, thank you to everybody for that. And just to Erica and Katie, it was a pleasure having you guys on. We we will miss seeing your faces at our meetings. So there they are, one more time, the faces. Okay. See you guys later. Thanks once again. Have a great summer.
Thanks, Dave. Kristen?
Yeah, last night I had the pleasure of talking to another Girl Scout troop that's interested in school board and how to run for office. This is the second Girl Scout troop that's reached out to me this year. And this group was from Cooper Town. They just had so many wonderful questions about what the school board does, how to run for school board. And just seeing their enthusiasm and, you know, their desire to maybe someday run for office was just really encouraging. So I just wanted to share that.
Great. Laura?
Yeah, busy couple of weeks for school board things. Last week I was at the finance meeting, liaison meeting, and the curriculum liaison meeting. Tomorrow I'm hoping to attend the legislative breakfast. I'll, might be a little bit late. But I'm glad it's, some Zoom things are nice. I never would have been able to attend in person. So it's actually really nice that it's on Zoom. And I think we'll see more participation hopefully that way. But I'm glad to be able to attend these kinds of events and advocate for more equal funding, more fair funding for public schools, charter reform, and many other important issues. And advocate for our district and other districts in our county and state. And then also the Linwood Time Capsule is next week. I'm hoping to attend that as well. It's going to be very exciting to see what comes out of there and hear a little bit about what's going in there. Because I can't even imagine opening that up in, you know, 50 years from now and looking back on this strange time in our lives. But yeah, so looking forward to that as well. Otherwise, congrats Erica and Katie. So exciting, bittersweet, happy sad. But thank you both and and good luck. Have a good summer. Really enjoy your summer. It's the best between senior year and going off to college. So enjoy that. Anyway, yeah, get vaccinated. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Laura. Sal?
Just a quick comment. I'm I'm always thankful and appreciative of the positivity that our presentations put forward. You know, so often we read and hear about the challenges and, you know, the failures of education. And, you know, the presentation tonight and our presentations in previous weeks come to us with action plans that are full of celebration of success with the mind of what we're going to do to make it better. But, you know, that positivity, I think, permeates the way that the staff and the students look at their own education and the ownership of it. So I just wanted to say thank you for that continued perspective because, you know, there's so much out there that is negative in terms of of education and and what needs to be done to catch up. It's refreshing to hear the positivity and I think it's worth it for our students and our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Susan?
First of all, I completely agree with you, Sal. It feels good to hear about expectations and and things that we can look forward to. I also want to congratulate these two fabulous young women, Erica and Katie. And I wish them much good luck. And I also agree with Laura, have a great summer because it'll be a lot of fun. I see, good, thank you for everything you've done. I'm going to push Linwood one more time. They are having an open house to to view the old school before it goes down on June 12th. It is a Saturday. There in there, there are, there's a sign-up sheet where you have to sign up to go in and get a tour. It's only on the webpage, I think. I haven't even seen it actually on the webpage. So I've had a lot of questions about it. I'm directing people to the webpage so that they can sign up. Lots of people want to go in and see the old building before it's taken down. I think the most important thing to remember about this is it's not so much the kids. The kids want to come, but it's the community. It's the moms and the dads who really are saying, when can we get in? When can we take a picture with the lion? So I just want to emphasize to the community that June 12th is their opportunity not to see the new school because that's locked up, but you're going to see what you remember. And I hope that everyone will come out. June 12th, you have to have an appointment and Blue Tailor is doing the tours. Who knows more about Linwood than Blue Tailor? Nobody. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Susan. Bridget?
I, I will start with a thank you to Katie and Erica as well. In addition to their board reporting, I've gotten to cheer for them on the sidelines at Track Meets and Frisbee and know that they are all around strong students. And Erica, I want to wish you good luck at districts. You mentioned that for the track team, but not that you're representing the Fords there. And it's nice to have students, I was able to do the student or to do the strategic planning with them and kind of get a rapport. And I like that they not only, you know, attend, but really follow.
Whoa.
Whoops.
We lost you, Bridget. You froze up.
Long enough to have the inside. That hummus public comment.
Hummus public comment.
Sorry, I'm a little.
All we heard was hummus public comment.
Sorry, I was saying how Katie and Erica, I had the chance to, you know, I know that they're engaged in the meetings when we can crack jokes about the hummus public comment. So that's, their level of engagement runs deep. Larry and Dave and I had the opportunity to go to the Chestnut World PTO, or no, the Cooper Town PTO and talk to them. They were, they are probably the last of the PTO meetings that we will do this year. Look forward to hopefully doing more in-person next year. I participated in the Delco Legislative Council Monthly Meeting, went through a lot of legislative activity that's going through the Pennsylvania House and Senate. One that generated a lot of, a lot of conversation was about a bill that's proposing to allow parents to opt for an additional school year of education to kind of make up for pandemic issues. There's also a lot of discussion of charter reform. And there's some events with the governor that Larry was at recently and other kinds of advocacy opportunities that Larry might be able to speak to more. And I'm looking forward to tomorrow's legislative breakfast where local representatives who are strong advocates for public education will be joining us and talking more about charter school funding reform. As usual, I've been on several of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association statewide calls. Some of the topics were about school safety and security and the the reports that districts get each year on that and the onboarding of new school directors. With that, I will say that that's a topic that we will be looking at carefully. Three departmental school board members and we'll have at least three new, new members. There's eight people who got through the local primaries. And I hope that they are all kind of paying attention to the issues that our district and public school districts across the state are facing and are learning about the full roles and responsibilities of being a school director so that in, after the November elections, we're ready to have some new folks join us and hit the ground running.
Thanks, Bridget. Tomorrow is the Delaware County School Board's Legislative Council's annual legislative breakfast. And I believe that we have more than 60 school directors and superintendents registered. We also have almost the entire Delaware County Legislative Delegation, all four state senators and most of the state representatives will be attending. Our state representative, Mike Zabel, is on the House Education Committee. And our neighboring Senator, Senator Carney, is on the Senate Education Committee. So they will each be giving an update of where things, where legislation is in their respective committees at this time. The discussion is going to be charter school reform focused. It's a hot topic right now. There's more momentum for charter reform than there has ever been before. I think in large part due to the pandemic, which. I think in large part due to the pandemic, which exacerbated the load of students going to cyber charter schools and therefore money leaving school districts to go to cyber charter schools. Yesterday, I was pleased to join about 40 superintendents and school directors to meet with the governor at, at Pottstown High School. I told my board colleagues that it was the first time I've put on a suit in 14 months. And I really appreciated the fact that it was 90 degrees. But it was great to have the governor come and, and speak to this issue. He had been up in Wilkes-Barre earlier in the day on same thing. And we hope to see that, to be able to get charter reform across the finish line this year. So. Also, just want to restate thanks to Erica and Katie. It's, it's been a pleasure to have you both, wish you the best of luck. The board met in executive session prior to the meeting to discuss employment agreements. And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Barry, can we talk about the next public meeting?
Thank you. Thank you, Bridget. The next regular public board meeting will be held on June 3rd, 2021. And.
Turnroll.
Dr. Ruchi, do you want to tell us where that meeting, how that meeting will be held?
Yes, yes, that meeting will be held at the administration building, in the boardroom of the administration building at Oakmont, at our regular start time, 7:00, 7:30. We will hold executive session in the boardroom. So those members of the public who will be attending the, the meeting will have to wait a little before entering the room. We will do our best to conclude executive session at 7:20, allowing for time for members of the, of the public to, to enter the building. We will put, you know, specific directions for folks. We'll have that posted on the website prior to, and have signage on the doors as well.
Dr. Ruchi, what is the capacity of the, of the board meeting room there? And can you speak to any requirements for masks or other things that people should know before they plan to attend?
Bridget, I don't know, I don't want to guess at the capacity right now and the number escapes me. So I, I don't want to state a number that I may be off by one way, you know, one way or the other. So, you know, we will let folks, you know, let folks know that. We are still, as a school district, functioning under our health and safety plan. So I think the most important thing for people to know when they enter the room, they will be required to wear, wear masks until that plan is replaced by whatever the next plan needs to be. But for now, people will need to wear masks.
And one other thing, could we just mention how the meeting will continue to be broadcast? Or if people want to participate or view it remotely?
Sure, yeah, we will continue to broaden, to broadcast live. So people will be able to, you know, to view the, to view the meeting. We will still ask for people who wish to make public comment to notify the district on just providing their name, address and the topic. But we'll get, we'll get all, that will all be posted for our directions for folks.
Okay, thank you. Any other business, any other comments? Now I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Moved. Second.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. See you for real in June.